Seeing as at seven, I'll call this committee of the whole to order and I'd ask the clerk to please call our roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe? Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay. Are there any additions to the agenda or changes to the agenda, additions or changes? Very good. Staff report, we do, we're gonna have a couple of staff reports it looks like. Bill, you're heading this way, why don't you start?
I'm not sure, has anybody seen rain lately?
Yeah, rain.
I wanted to give you a little update of what we've been doing in public work since Saturday morning. Again, as many, it's been reported, we had typically anywhere from four to seven inches of rain throughout the city. I know my rain gauge in my yard was 6.75 inches, so, and then two more rain events after the Saturday morning event. So, we're very busy dealing with flooded streets and also flooding in homes, basements. We have a list of about 25 people that we're contacting and the process of contacting to look at various preventative measures that they can perhaps take, including our overhead sewer program. And some folks are not aware of this particular program and it's a very good program that we've been, had in place for many years now, so, we're talking to residents about ways to help with sewer backups that may have occurred in homes. Statistically, the rain event we had, and this is from my determinations, I've not heard this officially, but was probably, it has about a 1% chance of occurring in any one year. So, the amount of rain we had and the time period we had it in is about a 1% chance of occurring. So, the last thing we had a rain event of this magnitude, which I recall, I guess when you're in this business you remember those, was August of 93. We had generally about six inches of rain. I know the boneyard sheet piling is overtopped, we had a variety of structural flooding, what have you. To our knowledge, and I checked and others checked the boneyard, we don't believe it overtopped the sheet piling anyplace during the storm event, but again, lots of street flooding. So, this week we'll continue knocking on doors, talking to people about various issues they may have had in around their home. And I do want to thank all those residents in the community that have unofficially adopted an inlet in town. We very much appreciate residents that clear inlet structures, those storm grates by the curbing on the streets, anytime you can keep those free of debris, limbs, leaves, paper, whatever, that really is helpful, because a lot of the street flooding that occurred a lot of times is exasperated by the inlets being blocked. And just so you know too, because this was a very intense rain that we had, our storm sewer system is really only designed to take what we call a five or 10-year event, and this was a much more intense event. So, by design, there is gonna be pounding in streets in the intense idea of a storm, but it quickly and typically will subside too. So, anyway, I wanted to let you know that all in all, we're doing okay. We had folks working overtime and we'll continue to make contact. And if you know of homeowners that had water issues in their basement that hasn't called us, please urge them to do so, because we may be able to help them out. That's it.
Very good. And Carol?
I just had one question about trees down. We've had a lot of trees down over by Lincoln. And if people have teenagers, like 12-year-old, they love to play in the rain and remove the great stuff like mine, so, he likes to hang out when it starts raining and take the debris away, so.
Great. And the trees, you know, we ask for the most part homeowners to, particularly the smaller limbed trees, to manage them themselves.
This one is pretty, it's pretty big.
But if they're large trees, let us know, city trees that is, let us know and we'll take care of that.
I think it's.
So, pretty much the streets should all be clear. We had a lot of reports of limbs in the street, but we kinda went up and down the streets and, so, streets should be clear, but if not, call us.
Very good. Thanks for that report. We have another one from the fire department, Chief Brian and also Phil, Fireman Phil, are you going to be giving us, well, tell us what you're gonna do there, sir?
All right.
Something good, I can tell.
Well, I'll tell you what, after hearing that disparaging news, you're making this presentation pretty easy, Bill, I appreciate that. It's hard for me to talk and sit, can I, is it okay to stand in the street?
You may.
All right, good deal.
To stay near the mic.
Stay near the mic.
Sort of near the mic, yeah, so everybody can.
All right, is this loud enough?
That sounds good.
All right. Well, on June 7th, there was a significant event that happened at Crystal Lake Pool, there was a near drowning, and thanks to the quick actions of the lifeguards there, it was a near drowning. And what I wanted to do is recognize the young people that actually participated in saving a life. So, I'd like to call up right now Lauren Grubb, 21, Carolyn Hokel, 24, Demetrius Jackson, 17, and David Jen, 17.
Wow.
Now, you're probably wondering, what is the significance of giving their ages? I thought that was very important, because so many times in the media, we could hear negative things about the younger generation. So, when we do hear something this positive, this outstanding, I think it's very important that we recognize them. And because of their quick actions, they acted as 20- or 30-year veteran lifeguards, but there are no 20- or 30-year veteran lifeguards, because you don't become a lifeguard as a career. Oftentimes, you're doing it as a teenager, and that's what these young people did. The many hours that they spend in training, the many hours that they spend sitting in that chair in the sun, not able to listen to the iPod, I know it's hard. The many hours that they spend not just being lifeguards, but they're also oftentimes babysitters, they're pool police, you know, they have to enforce the rules, in addition to watching to make sure that things are okay in the pool. And on June 7th, because of their actions, there is a two-year-old child that is still here. Because of their actions, there is a mother that's still able to love her child on this earth. Because of their actions, there's a father that can still hug his child. So, I think it's very incumbent upon us as the older generation, whenever something this significant happen, we need to champion that cause, we need to encourage that. So, I just wanna take this time to present each of them with certificates. The fire department was called, and when we got there, we had what we called, in our terms, a no patient contact. Because the actions that they did and the ambulance was there, we didn't have to make contact with them. However, we were able to still get there and witness an amazing thing, so, I wanna thank each one of you, and I wanna present you with a certificate. And the certificate simply says, it's a certificate of appreciation. This certificate is awarded to Lauren Grubb in recognition of your lifesaving actions on June 7, 2014, at Crystal Lake Park Family Aquatic Center. I won't read each one, 'cause they all say the same thing with different names, but I just want to again applaud each one of these young people for what they've done and thank each and every one of you. Now, I'm on a time crunch, so if you have somebody else's certificate, just trade amongst yourselves. And there was one other young lady that couldn't make it tonight, she was only 16, and her name is Olivia?
Hedgens.
Come over here and say it on the mic, 'cause I can't, there are too many vowels.
Hedgens.
Hedgens, okay, good deal. H-E-N-T-G-E-S. That's why I couldn't say it. But you can give that to her, and thank you for your actions.
Thank you so much.
That's the kind of quick response that means so much to the families involved, and we really appreciate the help of these young individuals. Other staff reports online, or has anybody come up with such as that? All right. So, we'll go on to the next thing. Next is the approval of minutes of our previous meeting from June the 9th. Carol, suggest that it's moved.
Second.
Eric, seconds. Are there changes or corrections to be seen? Having no comments, those in favor of approving the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Of those opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right. We're gonna have some public input, let me look to see if it's at the time. Yes, here's one for before. We'll start with, start with the first person who's given me a slip, and Mrs. Esther Pat. Give us your address and what you're gonna speak about.
Thank you. My name's Esther Pat, I live at 706 South Kohler Avenue, and I'm here speaking on behalf of the Champaign-Urbana Tenant Union. Just briefly, I wanted to thank you and express support for your decision to allocate $50,000 of social service funding toward the cost of relocating residents of the Barnes Mobile Home Park. And there are a few residents here tonight who I think will speak to you. I did write to all of you privately and mention that I don't think $50,000 is probably enough to relocate everyone, although you will hear from some people that one-ninth of $50,000 would do it for them. And I did suggest to you, and I will suggest again, that with, if people have more time than the April 15th, 2015 deadline they have right now, additional funds that are needed to make the relocation possible for some people with more difficult circumstances could likely be acquired elsewhere, not from your treasury, because there are a lot of programs that can help people, but they are not, even the programs you fund, the funds might already be committed for fiscal year 15, but you might be able to get them into the fiscal year 16 if they have a little more time. So, I do encourage you to consider that option. And I do know that, I just, one of the council members shared with me the letter that's going out to folks soon, so I know that you are communicating with people, and I know you've been meeting with folks that are just trying to figure the whole thing out. I've been watching the meetings and I see, I know, I just want you to know, and you know, you do know, you've seen it, there's some people who are kinda nervous and maybe even a little freaking out, and it's that April 15th deadline and their financial situation, how those two things combine. And I know you're just saying be patient, and as long as people know that in the end they aren't just gonna get booted out and end up losing their home, I think they'd be patient, they just wanna know, and I understand things takes longer, I just think you need more time, they need more time, you're the ones controlling the timeline, make more time, and that will solve both your problems. Thank you.
Okay, then, thank you very much. Next, Larry Baumann. Please let us know your address and give us the topic you'd like to talk about.
My name's Larry Baumann, and I live at 610 South Glover, number four, Barnes Park. I know you guys heard a lot of those. I've been to about every one of these meetings here lately, and we've all talked about all the money and stuff like that, appreciate you guys coming up with $50,000. I just wanted to, every time I hear about it though, it's all like, well, this person's gonna get this much, and this person this much, everybody's a different, stuff like that. I just think that we should just take it and divide it nine ways and everybody go their way. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Thank you for your input, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Scott Dossett, you'd said you wanted to speak before the event, so come on up.
Hello, everyone. Good night, good evening, I guess. I'll say good night in a few minutes. 501 East High, a couple of blocks that way, makes it easy to come and bug you guys about stuff that interests me. The first thing I wanted to support tonight was the resolution about the new sister city in Thienville, France, and there are a lot of people that will speak behind me about that, I think. There are a couple of other people in the audience I recognize, including one of our greatest generation, so, I don't wanna belabor that, but I certainly support that. No load to the city. Perhaps we can get some Francophiles that are interested in doing some exchange work, and you know, we just kinda grow these things. Been active in the Sister Cities Program since its inception here in Urbana, and I think it's a cool thing for our city to do and to expand. So, that was the first thing. Second thing, I titled on the note, informal rentals. Noted with interest in the News Gazette about a week ago, the lady who had been able to rent out an extra bedroom, and there were maybe new rules about extra bedrooms, and I just wanna come forward as a real fan of the Airbnb, VRBO type models, and certainly there are safety considerations, there are probably code enforcement considerations and all of that kinda stuff. But I have found these staying in another person's house, renting a bedroom for three or four days, just a really wonderful way to drill down into a community. And I think that Urbana has a lot of, a lot of flavor, a lot of taste, a lot of things that people can savor here. And I can assure you that there is a whole, you know, groundswell of people who'd rather not stay out by the box by the interstate. And so, I'm hoping as you and community development go through rules and regs for rentals, with the possibility of what I'm calling these informal rental situations, that you think liberally about that. Pay attention to health and safety, but to think liberally about that, 'cause I think it's a wonderful way for a person to introduce themselves to a wonderful town, and that would be our town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Okay, not that one. Okay. And then we have two people who indicated that they don't want to speak, but they have registered opinions. Actually, Corey Koker, did you, you didn't indicate, oh, you said you do not wish to address the committee, but that you're interested in showing support for tasers when we have that discussion here today and on the agenda. And Bishop Underwood and Dr. Reverend Underwood do not wish to address the committee, but ask that their position be entered on the record concerning their continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer system. Okay. Other people who've sent in their requests to be participating have done so, asking to come at the time of the item reaches, we reached the item on the agenda, so I'll hold those for those times. And that would be the end of our public input for tonight. The first item on our agenda is Resolution 2014-07-039, and this has to do with the adoption of a new sister city. So, we have a couple of people who've asked to come up and speak to us, they have submitted their slips, but actually just stay on the agenda, so please do come up and give a presentation so that we may then enter into discussion. We can provide you with a couple more chairs. So, this has to do with a resolution which would create a brand-new sister city in France, Thienville, France, under the guidance of the Sister Cities International Program. We have Chris Store, Michael McCollan, Kilcolan, and Mr. Kermit Harden here to speak. So, Chris, wanna start, well, Michael, why don't you start?
Thank you, Dennis, and hello, council. My name is Michael Kilcolan, and I am leading the French portion of trying to obtain a new sister city, and we're looking at Thienville, France. First of all, as we kinda briefly mentioned a couple weeks ago, the Sister Cities International mission is to create cultural, educational, information exchanges with person-to-person opportunities. We are petitioning to the council to pass a resolution that would authorize Urbana and Thienville to create an agreement for a sister city. And there's already existing sister cities regulations and rules about that, so we would just follow their policies. And the full resolution has been submitted to you guys already for your review, and even though there is an annual fee, it's already been paid and allocated for in the budget every year, and the same price applies to whether it's one city such as Zomba or multiple cities by adding on extras, there's no extra cost added to the program. And for Thienville, they already have a sister city agreement also with a place called Gao Ma Li, so, they already have their organization set up as well for their city, and we have our sister city agreement with Zomba, and we did a conjunction agreement with Haizhou. So, we already have forces in place in both cities to go ahead with this agreement. One of the things that we're looking at is that we both already have African partners, and we're both seeking a relationship. Urbana's been looking for European, and France has been looking for an American, so, this is just ideal that we're looking at the same time at each other. We also have a large French community here in Champaign-Urbana, and it would be ideal for our city to have a relationship with a French city in particular, because of so many French here in town. Just to, shortly to show you, Thienville's kind of in the middle along the Alsace-Lorraine region, three hours to Brussels, Paris, Frankfurt, and Stuttgart. And my partner over in Thienville, her name is Elise Paulo, so we got together back in April when I was in France. And Elise had been here back a couple years ago, when she is a university professor of law in Luxembourg, so she was here at U of I for a bit, and she also met with the people here in Urbana. And I just skipped too fast. Okay. We have a proposal in our committee that we have been considering about assigning ceremony, and Thienville wants to do theirs on the 10th of November, because that is the 70th anniversary commemoration of the day that America and military liberated Thienville from Nazism. And so, we're looking that we could do our ceremony on the same day, and we're looking at trying to do a memorial for veterans here on the Urbana side as well, and we have Mr. Kermit Harden as been a veteran in World War II, and was within 30 miles of Thienville during the liberation in 1944. So, we are very excited to have found him already in town, when we have not even started advertising yet. We are thinking that we probably could tie our November 10th things into November 11th, which is the American Veterans Day holiday here as well, which also celebrates and honors veterans. This is me, I was at the monument for the Voie de la Liberté, which is in Thienville, and General Patton's Army went through there to liberate eastern France. We kind of have initial planning ideas, or is to do a joint public ceremony in both Urbana and Thienville. We're looking to try to do a live simulcast, and that there will be time zone coordination so that everyone can be awake at the same time. We are looking to try to honor veterans in the public for their live services and sacrifice, and we have, as I said, we have found Mr. Harden already, and he has even been decorated and recognized by the French President Sarkozy for the French Legion of Honor, and he'll be speaking shortly about his desire for this ceremony and agreement. We would like to get a resolution approval so that we can start to advertise publicly for additional veterans, and we would like to try to arrange for a military color guard at the time of the ceremony as well. We were looking to try to invite the Urbana Francophony d'Espoir for participation. We would love to invite the media, such as TV, radio, paper, and the websites, and we'd like to invite local businesses that already participate in veterans discounts, such as restaurants give veterans like discounted or free meals on Veterans Day, but perhaps they might be able to assist with advertising or things like that about our event. We'd like to also invite civic government officials, such as the VFW and the French consulate. And then there's several departments around campus, such as the French Department, there's a European Union Center, there's multiple libraries that are available for books and photos and research, and various other departments as we come across them. We're hoping within two, well, within one to four weeks in advance of November 10th, that we would try to have some type of after-school type programs for some history research things for high school students.
Hey, Mike, so, perhaps some of the details of our plans can come at a little bit later date.
Oh, okay. But we would like to also try to do public displays in advance to get the public excited about the idea of a ceremony. And as we discussed before, we are looking at cultural exchanges, but that would be further down the road. And then Phase Three would probably be people exchanges, maybe a year from now, try to get for the fall semester, perhaps with college students or high school students. There's a few links for further reading, and also at the Urbana Free Library, as I was there researching, there's at least seven bookshelves of French history books, and there's also plenty of books about World War II, General Patton, tourism, and language learning. So, we have a lot of resources that we can use here within our own town for planning a ceremony and joint with Thienville. Do just have a few quick photos, just to give you some ideas of what the place looks like. So, we have a few roads, a roundabout and a boulevard. Here's, yeah, I know, France loves their roundabouts, so. Here's like Place de la République, day and night. They have a huge downtown pedestrian zone area, so there's outdoor café, you know, the French café culture, there's shopping, planters, nice brickwork. There is a fantastic carousel from 1884 that is still operating, and it's beautiful. The City Hall, the mayor's office is up here by the flags, and then there's additional side buildings. For a small town of 40,000 people, they have quite the impressive medieval style of architecture for their city hall. A couple of churches, there's one Protestant church in town, and there's several Catholic churches, France being a heavily Catholic region. There is a new civic center type of building that's being built that's, one of the goals is to, designed to get seniors and adolescents and young people kinda combined together to talk to each other, to work together on projects and things of this sort. And I see this as like a potential outreach for future exchanges as well. The Moselle River, some old ornament buildings there, a little bit of transit, there's multiple buses, bus lanes, bus stops, bike lanes, and then train station has bicycle rental area as well as public bus stop area and the courtyard of the train station, and beautiful TGV trains that run to Paris. There is several streets, these are just two examples, but that are named in memoriam for during World War II times. So, we have Robert Wax, Thienvilleois Résistant, and we have Walton Walker, who was an American soldier in Thienville. So, they, this is partly why November 10th is very important to Thienville to try to do a ceremony, it's because they already have these people with streets that are named after them even. These are a couple of the American restaurants that I had mentioned a couple weeks ago, so we would look forward to participation from the Thienville side with these American restaurants, as well as any restaurants in our own community that might be French owned or French style. But so, in the end though, I think the epitome of Thienville is that it's got old architecture and new architecture, a new shopping mall was built in here. It's got, this is the Memorial Park where the Voie de la Liberté statue was at, but it's got modernity, and it's urban environment, but it's also got nature with mountains and beautiful skies. And I think Urbana embodies all of those ideals as well, we have old and new parts, we have modernity, but we have historic regions, and we are very much an urban city with a very large rural corn and soybean region around us. I did want to also mention, as part of our French community here in town, we do have, there is a block party on Saturday, this coming Saturday, over at Washington Learman, it's a French-speaking barbecue party, but it's a block party authorized by the city of Urbana. And there is also a music CD that is created by a group of people here in Urbana, that's French-language songs, but it's Urbana and Champaign people. So, partly, this is just hopefully to encourage that there is enough Francophony community in town to show that we can support a sister city agreement.
Thank you very much. And Chris, did you wanna say just a very brief word or not?
I'll defer to Mr. Harden.
Okay. So Mr. Kermit Harden is an acknowledged veteran and recipient of French medals from the President Sarkozy. Tell us a little bit about, very briefly, sir, if you could, a little bit about your interests and why you'd like to focus on this memorial for that time period in Tionville.
I think I should lead off by saying, I'm just trying to think whether I have four or five opportunities to being at the other end of these types of things in France. They're very, what should I say, patriotic types of meetings. Lots of wine, parades. I don't know, you didn't say anything about a parade. But the French know how to do a welcoming ceremony for visiting people. And as I say, I had the honor of being involved in six or seven of those over a period of, I guess I've been made eight trips to France since the war. And I'm a recipient of the Legion of Honor from France, which was a big ceremony that occurred in Urbana. Did I got that? But the, it's a, it's a very interesting and historical moment for the people of France. And I think it would be just as equally for Urbana. You can almost do anything you want to in the way of ceremony and so forth. The mayor was always there and made a speech, which was always in French. And I don't speak French, but they always applauded.
That's a good sign.
But it is a, the way they did it over there was, it was not a fly-by-night arrangement at all. It was very well structured and always had to be important people there. So I think you'd be happy to host such an event.
Yes. Well, thank you very much for those comments. Appreciate it very much. So, okay, just open it up to discussion here on council. Eric.
So I just want to make note that a few old timers, and I may be the oldest timer other than Kermit, who's here, remember that after he served his country in France, he served Urbana admirably as superintendent of schools. Back when we had small children in the schools, who are now middle-aged children. I just wanted to make one other suggestion. There are some really wonderful films that go back to that era and to the events that are closely related to this. So it might be an interesting part of the celebration to have a little film festival. Some, there are, you know, there were, like every other kind of period film, there were some that were better than others. But there are some really superb films that commemorate that period and the related events, events related to, you know, the landing in Europe and the progression of the war at that time.
Others. Carol.
I just wanted to ask you, I appreciate the pictures. They're beautiful. I call my grandmother, who my grandfather, who has passed, he passed during the war, allegedly served in France. But I don't know if they're where in France at this time. And so I went online to try to look up black soldiers in the war, in World War II, and couldn't find anything on Thionville France. And wondered if you had done any research on black regiments at that time.
No, we haven't gotten that far yet. I definitely envision that I would like to have several type of research projects. But this is something that I'm hoping that we could try to get a few high school students or college students to either write a paper, do some research, do a presentation, things of that sort. Maybe have a public display, you know, as part of our whole thing. But I definitely would love to hear, find out more stories about World War II of multiple people, not just Urbana, but Illinois and Americans that are anywhere in France, particularly Tionville, of course, but anywhere. It's close enough is what we're saying. But right now, I have not myself yet researched that idea. But that's a very good topic, and I would love to have someone do that.
I think there was, Gislis did one on, my son, my oldest son participated in tracing the history of the Tuskegee Airmen in this area to Champagne, Urbana. And it was an excellent project. And so the children who participated would normally not have this level of exposure. And so it was really a good project for them to see their grandfathers and ancestors to be a part of this. And often they are not included. So I would encourage the city of Urbana and the sister city program to do everything diligently to include other soldiers in that era so that, maybe my grandfather was there. I don't know. But I know he did die in the war, and we have a memorial for him every year with our family, so.
I might say, Thionville was not involved in much of the war. By the time Patton got there with these tanks, he just ran through the town and went on to the next town. And left people like me to clean up after they were there. But Thionville is 30 miles from Metz. Metz is a larger city. And then I think it's probably 30 or 40 miles from Luxembourg, which is an entirely different country. But it's there. So I think as far as the history of Thionville, it's pretty much passing through.
Other comments? Yeah, Eric.
So I happen to be reading about the 761st Tank Battalion, which was African-Americans, among whose members were Jack Robinson, whom we know otherwise as the great baseball player after the war. And General Patton addressed the 761st Battalion. And among other things he said, one of the things he said was, "I don't care what color you are, as long as you go up there and kill those kraut sons of bitches." So that's some real history that connects.
Okay.
Well, I don't know. Patton said it.
Mayor pressing, and then Carol.
Yeah, Jim Burgess, who was the state's attorney, the first African-American state's attorney in Champagne County, was in, I believe, a tank unit. So there may be some connection with him and France. So we could look into that.
And Diane.
Well, there's a lot that Patton said that I will not repeat here. But anyway, I would like to move Resolution Number 2014-07-039R to counsel with a recommendation for approval. And the resolution is one authorizing sister cities arrangement between city of Urbana, Illinois, and Tionville, France pursuant to sister cities international program.
And who gave us a second? Okay, Charlie. Okay. Other discussion? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor indicate by saying, okay. One more comment?
Yeah.
All right.
When we, we do have a document already in our possession about the Battle of Metz, which is where the hardest part of the battle was at, because that's where most fortifications were. And so by the time they broke through that, that was over a month. And then they were able to just pretty much go right through Tionville. And as Mr. Harden said, kept going, going up to Luxembourg. But we do have one historical document already that's detailing the war in that area. And he was in the Metz area, so we do want more documents.
Great. So we have a, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any other discussion? Is that, is that a question? Carol? Okay. All right. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So that will go to city council next week for final approval. Thank you, gentlemen. And before we leave the topic, I want, I just wanted to make an announcement. I got an email yesterday morning from Zomba, Malawi, from Gomezgani Nasulu, indicating that a package we had sent to him had arrived. And he wanted us to know that the first city council and mayor were elected in the regional, in the national elections this year. And this is the first municipal elections in, I think, eight years in Malawi for constitutional election. And that the city council and the mayor are having their very first meeting to begin managing city affairs as elected officials tomorrow, tomorrow morning. So I thought that we've been waiting. And while we were operating in Malawi, there was no elected city officials. We worked with the staff administration, really pretty much appointed by the central government. So it's very exciting news about Zomba, Malawi. All right. Thanks very much, guys. Moving to the next item, Resolution Number 2014-07-037R. And this is a resolution, a resolution authorizing the submission of a grant application for the 2014 Edward Barnes Justice Assistance Grant called the JAG. Chief Connolly.
Good evening, everybody. Hopefully you had an opportunity to review. I think the packet is rather self-explanatory with respect to our request. I think we're putting the cart before the horse. If the TASER issue isn't moved forward, at least on the agenda. But we do have, as you saw, as an alternative, we have some additional needs for addressing some real issues with the range and trying to get the range reorganized and resurfaced and leveled. So in the event that the TASER issue doesn't move forward, there is an alternative for the JAG money to be applied toward the UBD range.
Are there questions for Chief Connolly? Go ahead. Carol.
I was like, I can't hear anything. I did want to ask about process. So the process of getting from the possible approval of the council, is the 14,000, is that the total of the purchase of the TASERS? What's the 14,000?
The way it works is each year, and as the memo indicates, this is the first year that the city of Urbana Police Department is actually administering the grant. In years past, the city of Champagne Police Department administered it based on a funding formula, which we still don't have an answer to from the federal government. The city of Champagne has awarded a certain allocation of money, the sheriff's office, the city of Rantoul, and the city of Urbana. This year, for some reason, the city of Urbana and the city of Rantoul were separated from the city of Champagne, although the county is still piggybacking on the Champagne city. And whatever formula, we're not sure if it's calls for service in combination with officers or whatnot. And each year it fluctuates based on the total pool. But they awarded us $14,000 for this year.
So they, you don't have to actually apply for it? That's the allocation that is set aside for the city of Urbana?
With the mayor's approval. Right. The mayor has to approve the request, the grant request, which is part of the process. We have to publicize it for 30 days, which has been done. This is the next step in the process. And then if the grant is awarded, we receive it.
So the grant was already submitted?
The grant is correct.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. Not to you, but I think I need to ask the mayor a question because I was not aware, and maybe I missed it. Is there some way that I missed that a grant was submitted for $14,832?
Mayor.
I didn't see a problem with asking for the money. So it's coming to the council for approval?
I guess the question, because there's a few steps that we stopped at at the prior conversations about the TASER. So not whether there's an appropriate allocation or use of 14,000, right? So that's not what my comments are about at this moment. But because we haven't come to a approval on the purchase or acquisition of TASERS, it almost backdoors the purchase and acquisition of TASERS without us actually finishing the community process that was said. And I looked at this as, it says in the News Gazette, published for a public hearing of which, most people don't read the News Gazette necessarily, to find this to be a public hearing on TASER purchase. So that kind of threw me off a little bit. And just the process of applying for the money, allocating it towards a purchase without us finishing the policy of usage of TASERS. So some of those pieces that still aren't done, but we're moving ahead with the allocation as if it is for TASERS.
I would like to say that on page two, it makes it pretty clear the proposed use of the 2014 grant funds. Second paragraph from the bottom of the page. If the city council does not approve the purchase of TASERS, then the Urbana Police Department will use the funds to make improvements to the firearms range. So this whole thing won't happen for TASERS without the council deciding on whether we want to move forward with TASERS or not. If we don't move forward, we've got another use for the funds.
So the process is what I...
So it's not an approval of TASERS at this point. It's approval of a grant that could be used for TASERS if we approve TASERS.
And so if you could tell me what the process is? What the if means? How do I get through the process of if?
If is a vote by the city council. We're having a discussion on TASERS again tonight. And, you know, whenever that discussion gets resolved on one way or the other, then we'll know how we're going to use this money.
Okay, so this is the discussion on TASERS? And I was just thinking about the grant.
At the end of this agenda today. There's a TASER discussion, an item 11. So we're still talking about it. We haven't made a decision.
I think the money before this...
This is a grant that is normally given to the city. And it could be used for whatever we decide we want to use it for. It's not committed in advance.
It is not.
So.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Mike.
Well, I think another important thing to remember here, Carol, is it may seem like a cart before the horse here, but we have to remember the federal fiscal year. I think that's part of the issue here is September is the end of the federal fiscal year. So I think the whole point is we got, we have to be, we have to ask for the money in order to get it. But there's still council approval on how the money is going to be spent. So this is really a perfunctory matter so that the federal funds can be received. The real policy debate happens later. And that is a little bit out of the ordinary, but hey, federal fiscal year is what it is.
Diane.
And it's important to note that the resolution itself that we're voting on does not specify a particular use for the money. And once we get it, we have 15 months to spend it, so we do have time to make those decisions. So I intend to support this resolution.
And Charlie?
Yeah, and we go after this grant money every year. And we have for gazillion years here, it seems like. I don't know when this program started, but I know back at least 2005 when I was on the, when I started on the council. So it's money that comes in on a regular basis. We might as well take advantage of it. I'd like to move to send this council a resolution for approval.
Second.
Okay. Moved by Charlie, seconded by Diane Marlin. Eric, you had a comment or question?
Yeah, I would, I had sort of the same initial reaction as I read this to the reaction that Carol had. But I think I'm satisfied now that council will have the final say on the, on approval of the purchase of TASERS. I'll just say for myself that that will be, that will need to be in the context of very explicit rules of, you know, guidelines with respect to the usage of TASERS. I think that's going to be absolutely critical for the council to specify, you know, given the, I think, because I think we need that level of transparency just to, well, we just need that level of transparency. Transparency is always good, and we have to be super transparent in this particular case because of the high level of feeling and strong opinions on this. case because of the, the high level of, of feeling and strong opinions on this.
Okay, very good. Okay, other comments or questions? Carol?
I just wondered, on the county, for about five years, we applied for the JAG grant, all five years, as you know, on the county board. And the, usually the acceptance of the JAG was not, it's not, not an issue, not really a problem. And it's not necessarily a problem in this case, except that I don't have necessarily anything to work with as far as what Eric just described as, what are the recommendations for usage if approved? Some of the other pieces that go along with this obviously controversial issue, we don't have. So in, in my case, I'm giving the authorization of the money with hopes that there's a real legitimate concern taken up in relationships to some of the issues that have been raised and real public hearings. This is not a public hearing. A public hearing is a public hearing like we do in many other areas, taking it out to the community. We've had them at King School, we've had them at the Civic Center. That is a public hearing. And I've been a part of many, many public hearings. So I would encourage part of that process to include real public hearings outside of the News Gazette and this particular chamber. And that's, no matter what boredom on, true public hearings go to the people, not the people have to come to them. And so I'm concerned about that. I'll support contingent upon, not that it's necessarily important at this point, but contingent upon further discussion about the anticipated application, if any, of TASERS.
Okay, thank you. Are we then ready to provoke? Michael?
I just have to say, in defense of Chief Connolly and the process here, I, I think it's unfair to say that this is somehow subverting some process. It's not. This is simply an ask for federal money. There is no appropriation here. It's just an ask for money, for federal money. So there'll be plenty of public meetings on the policy issue of how it's spent, but I don't think it's fair to somehow characterize this as something other than it is, which is merely an ask for 14,000 federal dollars.
I'm sorry, Dennis, I, I have to respond because it's really not a simple ask. There is a time schedule on grants and I'm a grant writer. And if it was just a simple ask for federal dollars, the JAG comes up every year, we do know that the JAG comes up every year, and public hearings could have been held anywhere, anybody else wanted to do them, including me. I've talked to many people, I've gone door to door. And so it's not as simple as an ask. I would not support, even if the federal government gave it to us, I would not support the acquisition of free money to purchase tanks to go all up and down our streets in our communities. I wouldn't support that kind of allocation, even if the money's free. So we have to, in this community, I thought, free money is not always free. And we have to also still be careful about that. So it's not as simple, the timeframe just came up. Grants do run schedules and I'm, I'm familiar with that.
All right, so this is a process that hasn't been completed yet, but at this point we're going to take the vote. Those in favor of the resolution to accept and apply for, accept the money of the JAG grant indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that'll be going forward to the city council with a recommendation of approving. Next on the agenda, resolution 2014-07-038R, a resolution approving, authorizing, entering into and executing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Urbana and the County of Champaign concerning funding for reconstruction of Fala Road, joint funding for reconstruction of Fala Road south of Windsor Road to the city limits. And Bill Gray, do you want to comment for us?
I do, thanks. Briefly, this project has been completed back in 2012. City council at that time was told there would be a county participation of 50% in the project. Process wise, it took us a while to work it out. We finally did work it out, as is stated in the agreement before you. The county board recently reviewed the agreement and voted positively to pay the 50% share. It's now our turn to review in kind. We provided the dollars for the project and the county is willing to pay their share of $392,403 for a $784,806 project. So project is done, it's been finalized out, and this is just to formalize that cost share.
All right, so you're saying the project has been completed?
It's been completed, yes.
Completed. All right. Yes, Charlie?
I moved, I'm not going to stand in the way of getting money from another agency. I moved to send this council a recommendation for approval.
Second. Okay, Eric seconded. Other discussion on this topic? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, that is approved. Goes to city council. Item number eight, an ordinance number 2014-07-065, an ordinance approving the First Amendment to an Agreement for Use of Right-of-Way with Gargoyle Technologies Incorporated, DBA, Volo Broadband. This concerns application of right-of-way on Broadway Avenue between Water Street and Main Street. Phil, are you going to address this one as well?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Very quickly, the applicant here has, after starting construction and getting more information about routing to serve downtown, it was determined that he had to change his location where he crosses Broadway near the Water Street area. So there's a modification to the previously approved license and this is an amendment for approving his change of location to serve downtown.
Okay. Are there any questions for Bill or any discussion? Okay, we're waiting for a motion perhaps? Diane Marlin?
I move that we send ordinance number 2014-07-065 to council with a recommendation for approval, and this is an ordinance approving a First Amendment to an Agreement for Use of Right-of-Way with Gargoyle Technology Incorporated doing business as Volo Broadband.
Second.
Carol would second it, Carol Ammons. Other discussion? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And opposed? Okay, that's forwarded. Thank you. Okay, item number nine, ordinance revised, this is ordinance number 2014-07-063, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the year, fiscal year 2014 to 15, consolidated social service funding. And, yes, Kelly, Markowski?
Yes, as directed by council, the changes have been made to the ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance with regard to the social service funding. The unallocated amount was divided by 25, which is the number of agencies who received funding, none of whom received full funding. So each agency received an increase of $296.
So that was straight across the board, is that correct?
Across the board, yes.
Other comments or questions? Yes, Charlie?
I move to send this council.
Second. Seconded by Eric. Other comments or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There are none opposed, that forwards to council. Was there?
You know, I did miss that and I'm sorry.
But actually, yes, Dr. Evelyn Underwood, I thought that you were going to speak at the next topic, I'm sorry.
She got two. She did two comments.
She didn't speak the first one.
I'm sorry, what?
Go ahead, please.
Did it pass already?
Actually it did.
So when was I supposed to talk?
Well, actually before then, I'm sorry. But I thought you were, I thought this was on a different topic, my mistake. Do you want to make a comment however, anyway, at this time?
I kind of resent the fact that I didn't get to talk before the board, but we all make mistakes.
I'm sorry. And, and we, and you are invited to come back also next week because this is a preliminary vote and the final adoption is next week.
I know it, but I, I really wanted to talk before y'all voted. But I, I guess.
Please share your thoughts.
I'm sorry?
Please do share your thought.
Okay, thank you. I know, as I spoke on last week, the importance, and I think I said it, a lot of people heard me and they felt, yes, Evelyn, I think the atmosphere changed for me and for a lot of the other people, but y'all have to make the decision. And I understood what everyone said, that other agencies couldn't receive the money however, unless they put in. I understand the process, but I thought it was important that that $7,400 be given to the agencies who had put in, who deal with youth, employment, and teen programs. And I thought I saw some agencies that dealt with that. But I guess it was decided that $296 was to be given to all of the agencies in the, from the three, the consolidated social services pool. And so I guess that's what y'all decided to do, give $296 to each of those, rather than I was thinking that the ones who deal with teens and youth employment, given the fact of what's been going on in this community. And there's another month or so before school started and I felt that $7,400 could, could have done a lot of good. So that's what I want to say. Thank you very much.
And thank you also. All right. Now we have a, a presentation on the Sustainable Choices 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan Draft. And we have several presenters. So please do come up and prepare yourselves. And Jeffrey, are you going to be introducing the topic?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Roberts. The Champaign-Urbana Urbanized Area Transportation Study has been working on the Sustainable Choices 2040 Long Range Transportation Plan for over a year now, and they're aiming to wrap it up at the end of this year. We have Ashley McLaughlin, Rita Black, and Jonathan Rush here from QWATs, here to present the background and the progress in the plan. They presented this to a joint meeting of Plan Commission, Bicycle-Pedestrian Advisory Commission, and Sustainability Advisory Commission on June 26th. We got some good comments from them. And at this point, staff is requesting that city council take a look at the presentation and review the draft plan online. And if you have any comments, please send them to us. You can submit them to me or directly to QWATs through the website. And here's Ashley and Rita to give the presentation.
Okay, thank you. Please do then. Welcome.
Good evening. As Jeff just said, we are here to give you an update on the work that we have done to develop the Long Range Transportation Plan for 2040. We have been working on developing this plan for the last two years. We have done a lot of public involvement during the process, has been the highlight of this plan. At this time, we don't have the draft document completed. That's something that we'll be bringing to you in the fall, probably in September, October, because the plan needs to be approved by the QWATs Technical and Policy Committees early in December. And before that, we will require to get the approval by all the, all QWATs members, agencies, which include the City of Urbana. Then we'll be back here with the final document and all the details in September, October. But at this time, we just want to give you an overview of all the work that has been done and we would like to answer any question that you may have regarding what we have done so far. Ashley will be giving you the presentation.
Thanks for your time this evening. So I'm going to start by giving kind of a general overview of the existing conditions in the community and then move forward towards some of the steps that we've already taken to complete the Long Range Transportation Plan. So the Champaign-Urbana Metropolitan Area is growing, population is growing, the region and transportation system are gradually expanding outward. The black outline here is our metropolitan planning area, which is covered by our Long Range Transportation Plan as required by federal law. As of 2010, Mohammed and Toluino were added to our metropolitan planning area. Mohammed is in a different color because it's not technically part of the census-defined urbanized area, but it is contained within our metropolitan planning area. This is a picture of our transportation network. The red is the road network as of 1914, and as you can see, we've expanded out from there. And this is a graph of population growth since 1970. So the multicolored lines at the bottom are the different municipalities within the metropolitan planning area and the county overall. The county numbers are in blue at the top of the chart, including the projections, our population projections through 2040. So currently in 2010, we're at 201,000 residents and we're projecting 245 in, in 2040, based on previous trends and existing economic and migration conditions. This is another graph of our population projections. Just for your awareness, our 2040 plan, the major difference in our plan is that we're projecting high-speed rail construction between 2030 and 2035, which would increase the population by an additional 5,000 residents, up to 250,000 in the county, and would increase employment by about 15,000 in the county overall. There's a discrepancy there, just to clarify, that the employment growth is significantly more than the population growth given high-speed rail because the unemployment rate is currently much lower than it has been traditionally. So to give you an idea of the difference between our 2040 vision and our current trends, the graph on the left shows population growth according to current development trends. The one on the right is according to our 2040 vision for a more concentrated development. You'll see that there's more growth on the, on the inside of the community rather than the periphery, as you see in the current trends map. And the same goes for employment for our 2040 vision. You'll notice that there's a lot more growth here in the downtown areas and along the University Avenue corridor, as opposed to the current trends, which shows it in the periphery of the community. In terms of demographics, the region is urbanizing, population is diversifying, and the way people travel is changing. Between 2000 and 2010, we saw an increase in the Asian population by 5.4%, an increase in the African-American population by 3.6%, increase in the Hispanic population by 2.5% and an overall decrease in the Caucasian proportion of the population by 5.7%. In addition, the county is shifting from rural to urban population, so we see about a 2.5% shift every 10 years in the proportion of the county population that lives in the rural areas to the urban areas, and we project that continuing through 2040. And the commuting mode for workers 16 years and over in the region is also changing. This is actually just a 2010 snapshot. But just to give you an idea of how the different municipalities compare in terms of transportation mode, I'll just point out here that public transportation usage is quite high in the Champaign-Urbana and Savoy area compared to Toluino and Bonville, where we don't have that infrastructure. And the same goes for walking and bicycling infrastructure as well. In terms of land use, we, the municipalities in the county have increased population density from 2009 to 2012, and agriculture remains the largest land use within the metropolitan planning area overall. For environment in the area, air quality is declining and water quality is, we have mixed results with a slight decline. We have two ways of measuring air quality in the area, eight-hour ozone readings and one-hour ozone readings. As you can see, the graph on the top shows eight-hour ozone readings and we are right around the threshold of what is acceptable for those readings. And then on the bottom, the one-hour ozone readings are below the accepted threshold. So we're still in okay territory, but we could certainly improve. And in terms of water quality, there is a slight decrease in quality between 2008 and 2012. Here, this graph shows that seven of the 10 water segments that we measure are not supporting their designated uses, whether that's for aquatic life, primary contact, or fish consumption. So that's something we need to keep in consideration when thinking about future development plans. And quality of life, this is a new portion of our Long Range Transportation Plan that we're expanding this, for this five-year cycle. It has been identified that obesity is one of the most urgent health priorities in the community, and areas in the core generally meet more livable criteria than areas on the fringe. So just some general statistics, these charts show the obesity and diabetes rate grows, have grown significantly for the entire United States since 1994. And this is a graph that charts our relationship to these statistics. So in terms of our role as transportation planners, active transportation can play a big role in helping people get their recommended levels of daily activity. And this- And this chart shows that for countries that have higher rates of walking, biking, and public transit, their obesity rates are much lower. So the U.S. is over here on the end with the highest obesity rates and the lowest rates of transit, walking, and biking. Whereas over here, obesity rates are much lower, where transit, walking, and biking are higher. And that's purely due to the amount of physical activity that people get each day. So how we're going to incorporate this into our long-range plan, it's not part of the federal requirements. But since we have a lot of data on the transportation system, on residential density, on a lot of these qualities over here that I've listed, we are going to use those to figure out quality of life for individual neighborhoods. So as we break down our transportation information in traffic analysis zones, we're going to use those zones to determine what the quality of life is in each of those neighborhoods based on health data, vehicle miles traveled per household, number of intersections, sidewalk connectivity, to try and identify ways that we, as transportation planners, can improve quality of life for our local residents. So the transportation system overall. Our Long Range Transportation Plan includes a significant portion of public involvement. Our biggest tool for that in this plan is our community conversations bus, hopefully some of you have seen and participated in. It's been to 29 events over the past two years, and we've received over 1,500 public These are some pictures of events. So as was already discussed somewhat in this meeting, it's much more effective to go out into the community to get public output, or input. So we went to public events that are already well-attended with our outreach bus to talk to people about the long-range plan and to get their input on different transportation conditions in the community, and talk to them about what they want to see for the future of their community. So these are some of the demographics, just to give you an idea of how we were able to target different neighborhoods and events, so that we could try to get a representative sample of people. The municipality served up here in the corner, race and ethnicity represented over here in the green graph, age in the purple graph, gender in the pie chart over here. We were able to get a somewhat representative sample of the community. However, you'll notice there's a major discrepancy in terms of the college-age population, because they're well overrepresented in our community. And so we had a hard time getting that many students. In addition, we're slightly underrepresented for the 70-plus. But in terms, when we combine that with the 60 to 69 and 70-plus, we're right at proportion for the community. And in addition, with race and ethnicity, we're underrepresented in the Asian population, but did a good job of getting representation for the rest of the community. And just to give you an idea of Urbana specifically, we geocoded all of the data that we got, both the nearest intersection to the residences of the respondents, if they volunteered it, as well as the input they gave. This is a simple map of about half of the people that responded to our surveys in Urbana. So the first time we took the bus out, we were getting information on existing conditions. We asked people how they travel around the community in a typical week. That's, that's the graph on the bottom here. And one of the more interesting findings was that biking is actually, that's the green bar here, was a very consistent mode of transportation despite age. It was about 15% in every single age category. In addition, we asked residents to identify strengths and weaknesses in the transportation system that they use every day. We got by far the most comments on the bus system from the respondents to the survey, and also the most positive comments on the bus system compared to any other mode of transportation. And I'll talk about those results a bit more later. In addition, we've done some visioning meetings to ask people what they want for the future of their community. So that could have to do with transportation or not. We met with, we had a meeting that was open to the public. We met specifically with focus groups of business developers, youth, and social service employees. And this poster just demonstrates, just demonstrates another one of our techniques for public outreach, which was to have a graphic facilitator draw the conversation live as it was happening, so that people could see that their input was being heard and also respond and reflect on different things that were being talked about throughout the conversation. In addition, these are posted on our website for other people to see what was discussed and to make additional comments.
Who drew that?
That was by a local artist. His name is David Michael Moore. Yeah.
And the posters are in the collab. They, yes.
Yeah, they do have them up in the collab. Mm-hmm. That's nice. So as a result of this initial round of existing conditions input and future visioning, we came up with these six themes that encapsulated the public input that we had received thus far. So safety and security, balanced development, multimodal connectivity, accessibility and affordability, healthy neighborhoods, and resilient economy. These are themes that we are using to guide our goals and objectives for the Long Range Transportation Plan, because we felt that they adequately represented all of the varied public input we got about transportation conditions in the community. So in terms of the different modes, just to give you a quick overview of where we're at in terms of different transportation modes in the community and the related goals and objectives, I believe you all have the goals and objectives, so I won't go over them in detail. In terms of pedestrians, few workers walk to work, safety is an issue, and the yellow comments are public input. People said that we need better sidewalk access and connectivity. And on that point, I will say that we are undertaking currently a massive sidewalk assessment of the 900-plus sidewalks, sidewalk miles that are in the community. So we'll have a better inventory of how to address existing gaps in the network and safety concerns related to the sidewalk network. The related goals and objectives are on the right. And I just put up a couple that immediately relate to the issues on the left for each mode, but I'm not going to go through those, since you already have a copy of the goals and objectives. I'll just go over the summary of each transportation mode. The next one will be bicycles, few workers bike, currently bike to work, bicycle infrastructure, access and connectivity is a big concern for people in the community, and safety, education, and enforcement is desired by both car users and bicycle users in the community. In terms of bus, transit ridership is way up in the region. The transit service area still does not match the urbanized area, so there are gaps in the system where people in the urbanized area don't have adequate access to the bus. And people responding to our survey said they wanted more direct routes, more weekend service, and safer bus stops. So sorry, just to give you an idea of, this is the bus ridership in the area since 2007. It's gone up quite significantly. For cars, complete streets, access management, and roundabouts are all issues that we have studies on already, that QOTS has done studies on and that guide our future planning of roads in the, in the urbanized area. Currently, crashes per 100 million vehicle miles traveled are below state targets, which is great. And when people talked about cars, they talked about congestion. We don't have a lot of congestion in the community, but what we do have is generally in North Prospect, so that's what people talked about. For rail, rail use is growing. A freight plan is necessary to identify rail and truck needs. We don't currently have one, so trucks can travel on any street in the, on any road in the network, whether it was designed for truck capacity or not. And public input asked for high-speed rail. Probably 90% of the comments we got on the rail network had to do with people wanting high-speed rail and faster access to regional, regional centers. Thank you. This is the Amtrak ridership since 2000. That also has gone up significantly, as you'll notice. And for air travel, as you all know, air travel at Willard has decreased since 2006. The percent of delayed flights is down 50% since 2003, which is good. And people responding to the survey wanted more flights to bigger hubs. This graph just demonstrates Willard in comparison to other regional airports. So Willard is in the dotted blue line here. Peoria is the dotted green line. Bloomington is the solid green line. And Springfield is the dark blue line. So that was our existing conditions. As a result of the existing conditions and public input, like I said, we designed our goals and objectives and associated performance measures to guide our planning and accountability into the future. I believe you all have copies of the goals and objectives, so I'll answer questions on that later. After establishing the existing conditions in the community, we took our population and employment projections, as well as public input, to design scenarios based through 2040, to get a better idea of what different projects would look like going forward. We have a suite of statistical models in our office to, to paint that picture a little bit better in terms of what density looks like, what development costs will be if development happens in different areas, personal vehicle miles traveled on a daily basis, how that will change given additional population or different development patterns. The list on the left details those models, population and employment, like I already mentioned, land use change and impact, travel demand model, which predicts congestion going forward, moves, which talks about motor vehicle emissions, scalds, which details social cost of land development. And then the last two, local affordability and livability, as well as the health impact assessment. Those are both part of our neighborhood assessment that we will use going forward, looking at quality of life issues in different neighborhoods in the region. The charts here on the right, I won't go into, but these are just a demonstration of some of the outputs of some of our models. So the travel demand model, which helps us figure out how mode share could change, depending on different development patterns, whether more people will be driving, riding the bus, riding their bikes. And these, excuse me, charts here on the bottom talk about housing density, development costs, as well as the change in vehicle miles traveled and what that means for transportation infrastructure into the future. Based on our models thus far, as well as our public input, these are the projected growth areas going forward through 2040. As you'll notice, they're generally already established growth areas that have room for additional population and/or employment capacity. So places like the downtown areas, the University Avenue corridor are obvious places where we can develop differently to accommodate more growth. The University Research Park and the Clearview Development have a lot of capacity yet for additional employment and population growth as well. So for our second round of input, we got a list of potential projects through 2040 from the municipalities and some from our public input. And we took the bus out and asked people to look at all of these potential developments and tell us which ones they thought were most effective or that they would prefer to see in the next 25 years. So the formatting got a little messed up on export here for my presentation, but I have yellow dots next to our most popular project so far. So the first one, this first section is projects that would happen from 2015 to 2020. The second one is from 2020 to 2030 and 2031 to 2040 here in the blue box. Oh, okay. So when people voted on our bus, they, we had a bunch of information boards up and maps talking about what we do, different developments in the community. And then people put stickers next to their favorite projects, as you can see. So this one, where there's not enough space for all the popularity of the project, is high-speed rail. This one here is the Kickapoo Trail. That was another very popular project. Another popular one was a multi-use path proposed on Florida Avenue that would happen from 2020 to 2030.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
We can raise on Florida. Raise on D.C. on Florida.
So with those additional priorities, we are also taking into consideration the previous long-range plan, which was completed in 2009. This is a map of the previous roadway vision for 2035. And the boxes in yellow give updates of what has happened since then. So a lot of these projects are in progress or have already happened. We haven't yet added our own future vision. That's something that's yet to be completed. But just to give you an idea of where we were in 2009 and where we are currently and how that will inform our plan for 2040. So the next steps to complete the plan are to figure out some, our project, our final project priorities, come up with a vision map for the future, like the one you just saw, updated for 2040, and then look at project funding projections through 2040 according to the fiscal plans of each of the municipalities in the area. And that is, that completes my portion of the presentation, and we would be happy to answer any questions.
Let's take questions. Mary.
On the ozone levels, do you know why that's happening? And also, how does our statistic compare with the rest of the country or the rest of the state?
With the ozone levels, we have some problems in the community regarding those numbers, is that in 2010, if you see the lowest bar there is 2010. In 2010, the location of the device that measured the level of air quality was on the, located on the school, Washington School in Champaign, Washington School in Champaign.
So there's only one, one device?
There was, there was one there, and the other one is in Bonville. And in 2010, when the school was remodeled, it was removed. Then the measurements that we have since 2010, the 2011 and the 2012 are from the device that is located in Bonville. And because it's close to the agricultural fields, it's collecting a lot of emissions from the fertilizers and all that. That's, that's what we discussed with the Illinois EPA regarding that. And we have been talking to them to see if there is any possibility of having, again, a device inside the community instead of having the device outside the community. That's, that's the discrepancy on the changes there in 2011 and 2012.
Other comments or questions? Mary, do it again and then Carol.
Yeah, you picked 2030 as when high-speed rail construction would start. Why did you pick 2030?
Okay. We met with Dr. Cow. Dr. Cow is the professor who did the feasibility study for the high-speed rail. And based on the analysis that he has done, he think that it will take up to the end of 2029, 2030 to start building the high-speed rail if everything falls into place.
He doesn't have the funding worked out yet, though, does he?
No, he's working on it, but the funding is not worked out completely. But he thinks that if everything goes as he think will go, will be 2030, 2030, the time that we'll start construction.
Okay, thank you.
And Carol.
The bus that you used was really creative to gather input. How many locations did the bus go to to gather input on?
Well, we went to 29 different events. Some of the locations we went to more than once, but I would say we went to at least 20 different locations.
That's, that's an excellent tool.
It was a lot of fun. We definitely found it, that we got a lot more feedback and a lot more feedback from people that wouldn't normally come to meetings than we normally would. And so it'll definitely be something that we use again.
Can we borrow that bus?
Well, what's really rewarding is that when we were at those places, people were thanking us for being there. And when we were there the second time, people were talking to us and asking us, "Do you remember me? What I told you? Are you going to do something about it?" It's just amazing.
And I will give a shout out to, to CUMTD that made that happen. They were, they worked with us and, you know, helped us get to each of the events. They retrofitted the bus for us. They were fantastic in helping make that happen.
Eric.
Are there good economic models, you know, that, that one can believe for the overall impact on the economic prosperity of a community as a function of institution of, you know, public transportation? For example, I mean, high-speed rail would be one example, but the other would be, you know, good buses in town, et cetera. Are, is, are there generally accepted models that can be used to make the argument that these things are, you know, we always have this, this issue with respect to public expenditures. Is it an expenditure, purely an expenditure, or is it an investment that's going to return more than you put in? And I, I wonder if there are good, good models that, that speak to that.
There are good models. We don't have one. And our practice have been in the past that we don't usually rely on models that have been developed outside, because we are quite a different community, because the university, we are different. And the way that we do things here, that's why in the last five years, we have developed all those models that we are using in-house with our own resources. Then at this time, what we are doing as part of the Long Range Transportation Plan is another part- is another part that we are not talking about that here, is developing a, a plan related to economic development without a model. And then with all the input that we are collecting to develop that plan, our hope is that in the future, we can get some funding to develop an economic model to measure the impact of transportation. But we don't, we are not there yet.
In terms of high-speed rail, what we've been relying on are other case studies, where high-speed rail has been implemented in other communities, both publicly funded, but also privately funded.
And Bill Brown.
On the neighborhood quality of life that you, assessment that you're doing, is that using these models that you happen to have right there? Or is that additional survey information, census data, or some combination of all that?
Yeah, well, it's the last two models here, the local affordability. Let me get to the, you want to talk about it while I find this slide?
I can explain that. This is not part of the requirement for the development of the long-range transportation plan. We just realized that we receive a lot of input from the community in general, and particularly, I felt obligated to respond to the community in certain way. Then, what we did is, we, based on all the input that we receive, because we locate the input on a map, then we have an idea of what the people wants in each part of the community. Then, we also have the local affordability and liability index model that we developed about two years ago, that take into consideration several variables. But we also received a grant from IDOT to develop a health impact assessment model. And with that health impact assessment model, we were able to get from a health agency in the community, a lot of health data. Then, what we are doing is, using those two models that we have in place, will be assessing the, the different neighborhoods based on traffic analysis zones. And with that, we'll see what are the conditions and what are people asking to get in place. And our hope is that if we put in place all the recommendations that people are asking for, to measure again what will be the level of liability and health of that neighborhood. That's, that's the second part of this process that we are doing at this time. We are working on this right now. We don't know what is going to happen, but we already have the models and we already have the data. We are just compiling everything and trying to run the models for the conditions. But that's, that's the hope. With that, I think that will be really valuable information for the cities and for the small communities, because we can tell them, if you do these projects, this will be the level of liability of this neighborhood, and this is what the people in that neighborhood are asking for.
Thanks. And then Diane.
How are you determining obesity rates in individual neighborhoods? It was referred to in the joint meeting notes, other than, I mean, unless you're doing surveys of height and weight and asking about their health history.
We will not be able to get to the level of measuring obesity rates, but we, at this time, have data on those neighborhoods, on the level of obesity of the people living in that neighborhood.
How do you have that data?
We receive some, some data from a health agency.
It's technically, it's the occurrence of obesity visits at a hospital or clinic in town. And so, it's not necessarily specific rates, but it's health records from in-town, and when the health code is labeled.
So, you geocode visits?
Exactly.
At the hospital for obesity-related diseases?
Correct.
Then, we have, and we don't have the, we don't present the detail of the location of each individual. What we do is, at the level of the neighborhood, we know, okay, there is a high intensity of people here with certain level of obesity, and we are just trying to find out why, based on the different variables that we are considering. Do we have enough access to transit in that neighborhood? Do we have a good bike network in that neighborhood? Do we have a good system of sidewalks in that neighborhood? And that's what we are assessing at this time.
So, you, okay, so, is every neigh, is every area of the city covered? Do you have information on every area of the coats?
This actually is our study area, right down here. So, we don't have the entire metropolitan planning area at this time. We have a good portion of Champaign and Urbana specifically. You'll see there's a gap right here in the middle, in the campus district, because a lot of those students use McKinley Health Services, and we don't have that data. The goal in the future, we've been in contact with a lot of the health jurisdictions in the area, and the goal in the future is that we can provide spatial analysis for all of those jurisdictions together, so that we'll have a better representation and understanding of the entire area.
So, you've gotten data from Carl and Christie and the Public Health District and Frances Nelson, or?
No.
Not from all of them. We are working with them, because we work with them to develop the I Plan, the plan that they need to put in place every three years. And we are providing some information for them. Then, our hope is that we can get the data, that we can do a better covering of the whole area.
So, it's incomplete at this point?
Correct. Currently, we have about 80,000 records, and so it does give us a representative sample. But no, we don't have every single record of every.
Okay. And I have one last quick question. I'm still working my way through the, the actual draft, and it's, the demographic data alone is fascinating. But when you talk about surface wa, you talk about the environment, and you mentioned surface water, but you don't mention the quality of the aquifer. Why is that not included as part of our water resources?
Because the, the data that we have from the aquifer is not detailed enough in the same way that we have the surface water. Then, it's really difficult for us, because the aquifer cover a really large area, to point that out to the area that we are covering under the long-range transportation plan.
But I just think it's so vital to this region that it ought, it deserves a mention somewhere in this plan.
RPC is working at this time on a water plan. And once we have the results of that, then we'll be incorporating that into the plan.
Integrated into this, okay.
More questions or such? Eric.
So, two questions. One is, in looking at this health index, is the high score good or bad?
In this case, the high score is good.
The high score is good, okay. Great.
The more points, the higher that you are.
Okay, yeah, okay. So, so the, the inner city is doing well, relatively?
Correct. I mean, in, in the urban core, there's a lot better access to transportation infrastructure, as well as services. So, grocery stores, health clinics. Population density is a good indicator for good health, because it allows you walking and biking access to more locations and services. So, that's kind of the general, that's a very simplistic description of it, but people in the core have better access to more services.
Do your, one, second question. Do your economic models take into account the healthcare costs as a function of obesity-related diseases? Not yet. Do you think that would be significant, or do you think that's going to be a very small factor? Or just impossible to tell?
I don't think I could say at this point. But, I mean, that's a really important part of the economic picture overall. I mean, I would, hopefully, if we continue this work with the health jurisdictions and the economic development plan, that'd be something we could include in the future.
Other questions, then?
One of the, I'll, I'll ask a question, I guess. One of the discussion points that came up in the joint session that you had with the Planning Department, the, the Planning Commission, and members of the biking committee, community, and the third group, was how do, how goals, there is this document that indicates the, the six pillars, you call them, are the goals, and action points that can be done, and strategies, which is a pretty interesting document. When it comes to deciding the goals that are going to be used and focused on for the future, some are going to be scoring higher than others. And there was a question about balancing existing projected plans by regional planning groups and coats versus new input from communities. And how do you balance that out? And is there a process that will make the new information as important as the information that you've already accrued and have expectations about as far as future funding? So, how are you going to be, how, how are those decisions going to be coming?
Well, basically, we work with our member agencies, which include the cities and the village and the university. And based on the discussions and the models that we have in place, we talk to the different agencies and tell them, you know, there is this grant available, probably will be good to apply for this project, because that was a project with a high priority when we did the public involvement process. And also, that project worked toward achieving our goal. I don't know if you are familiar, but every year, based on the previous long-range transportation plan that was approved back in 2009, we do an assessment on how well we are achieving the goals, if we are on the way to achieve the goal or not. And based on that, we produce what we call Long Range Transportation Plan Report Card, and we'll report on the different goals and the way that we are moving to achieve that goal. Then, when we do the decisions regarding the projects or the grants that we are going to apply for, it's based on the goals that we have in place, based on the input that we receive from the general public. And we give advice to, for example, Bill or Libby, about which projects would be good for them to apply when there are funding available.
So, it sounds like it's possible, though, that really good projects might not get fulfilled immediately, because there would not be a, a suitable grant program that could fund them, and everything is going to be dependent upon success of getting funding from grants.
Yes. And there is the other portion that is the federal funding that we'll receive annually. But that federal funding at this time is already compromised for projects that were decided by when we did the previous plan.
All right, let's, Eric, did you have a comment to share, or is that a personal comment that we don't want to know about?
I'm sorry, I got distracted. James Burgess was in the 761st Tank Battalion.
Okay, that was a divergent moment. All right, other discussions or questions? The mayor.
Does your model get used for big questions like where to locate a high school?
Good question.
We have been working with the Champaign School this week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and Bill.
When you were determining the study area, I think I might have asked this at one of the LRTP things, but that came, I didn't get a real good answer, because there's a lot of interest in the Kickapoo Trail, and we've invested some money in Windsor, in High Cross Road, and State redoing 150. I wondered why you didn't include St. Joe and, and go in that direction. And Illinois Water Company had, ran a main out there the last 10 or 15 years.
Well, the definition of the urbanized area is, the definition of the limits of the urbanized area are done based on the US Census. Every 10 years, the federal government define the urbanized area, and we don't have a say on that. What we do is, when we are going to start developing the plan, we get together with all the member agencies and stakeholders, and ask them what they think will be the area that we should consider for planning for the next 20 years, because there are some connections, mainly transportation connections between those areas. And the decision from the committee that worked on this was that we were going to include Mohammed. The urbanized area is the blue one, and that's the area that was defined by the census. We were going to include Mohammed, because it was the community that was closest located to Champaign-Urbana. And we saw, when we did the analysis, that there are a lot of trips made daily between those two communities. The committee, at that time, considered that St. Joseph was, was still farther away from Champaign-Urbana to have the same level of interaction that we have right now with Mohammed. And also, we, discussing that, we said, well, if we include Mohammed, why we are not including Rantoul, if there is a really close relationship? It mostly based on distance. They are really distant at this time from Champaign-Urbana than Mohammed, and that's why the committee decide we, to go with that. We need to draw the line at a certain point.
All right. That's a very good presentation. Are there any more comments or questions? I guess we could just wrap this up, then. Charlie.
Just, just one, if you could. Could you blow up the other quality of life? There are two quality of life tables there. You showed the small, the bottom one. Could you blow up the one that has the red? These are your neighborhoods, then?
Those are, those are the traffic analysis zones, was, we work. The idea for the neighborhood is, we'll be looking at similarities and grouping together some of those traffic analysis zones.
So, so you don't have your neighborhoods defined, then?
Defined yet, no.
No, okay, okay. So, you're working, so you're working on the criteria that defines a neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that'll be real interesting. Okay, and so now, what does the color mean here? That that's, says?
If you look at the top, it says the deficient criteria, and those are the different elements that we.
So, this is sort of like the reverse of the other one, then?
It is. It's kind of the opposite. The lighter color means greater access to services. The darker color means more services are deficient. So, these dots represent services that are deficient in a particular area. So, the more dots you see, the, the less the access those residents have.
The less liable that those areas are.
And I've got a question about the neighborhoods. You're, you're seeking that, that the data define the neighborhoods. How does that relate to the fact that some neighborhoods are self-defined socially and also by existing community groups? How, it looks like there's going to be a diversion result about what you define a neighborhood as.
Yeah, we cannot define the, the neighborhoods based on, because they are already defined by other groups. We need to work with the data that we have, and all the data that we collect is at the level of the traffic analysis zones. Then, based on the data that we have and the similarities on that data, then we will be defining the neighborhoods. And we usually define the neighborhoods based on socioeconomic levels and based on the network, the, the way that the network is defined, and the boundaries usually are defined by the major roadways.
I'm wondering if the word neighborhood is misleading, and I wonder if you should be using the word nodes rather than neighborhoods.
Could be, could be, yeah.
I think that would clarify what your needs are as far as assembling data in traffic segments that mean something to you, transportationally.
As we say, we are taking any comments, any suggestions, because we are working on the process of developing that.
Right, okay. Others? Oh, thank, oh, okay. Michael.
Quickly up, so I'm, Diane and I are looking at this, and we're noticing that Barringer Commons, Stone Creek, Myra Ridge, Deerfield, Yankee Ridge are all less livable?
Are less livable than downtowns and the areas that are closest to downtown. And the main reason is you have a greater level of access to more different businesses and services on those areas that when you are using a pure residential neighborhood.
Part of it is also the cost of living. And so, if you live in some of those areas, you're likely to need to own a car. And so, sometimes that's cost prohibitive for part of the population. So, some of the livability is also related to the costs of transportation. So, walking and biking is good for you health-wise, but it's also quite a bit cheaper than owning and maintaining a personal vehicle.
I get to walk around my pond every day.
Well, that's great. Do you get groceries from your pond as well?
Well, actually, I can walk to Walmart in about seven minutes. Not Walmart, Aldi, actually.
And this is actually as of 2009, I believe? And so, this isn't actually our recent analysis. This is just an example of our livability model. So, some of this data, or these results, per se, might be a little outdated.
We are in the process of updating that liability index with new data.
Okay, yeah, just curious about how livability is defined, I guess. When you say cost of living, is that, so you're just using a standard, so it costs, housing is more expensive in some of these neighborhoods, therefore, that is a negative in terms of livability, because some folks can't afford to live there, or?
No, we are not considering housing as part of the liability index. We are considering the portion of your budget that you spend on transportation as part of the liability index.
Okay.
How much portion of your, of your budget you use to pay for transportation?
On average, obviously.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Very. Okay, very interesting. Well, it sounds like you're doing a very thorough job. I'm thinking about the time that we put into doing the update of the downtown plan and how many new ideas came from that, and how it evolved over a year of discussions. And so you're obviously not finished. You're just really hardly started, it sounds like, so we'd be very interested to hear. Taking a snapshot of our community is going to be such an interesting thing to process and to learn from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. All right, now we have a discussion on tasers, and I don't know if there's going to be an initial comment on this or not, or, we do have one person who wants to speak and address the city council, so. Should we start with that? And then, I guess the discussion will pretty much be here on, you know, the city council itself having an open discussion. Okay, very good, then. Thank you very much. Chief Conley, please do come in, and you can kick off the, the open discussion.
Over the past several months, I've provided a great deal of information concerning the use and background of the taser. I debated tonight whether or not I should review everything with you again, but since you have all had well over a month to digest all the written materials that I provided you, I opted to limit my comments to any technical questions that hopefully Lieutenant Rich Searls can answer. And as for any policy issues, draft policy issues, they're going to be a work in progress, and I'm asking that the city council allow me to work with the civilian police review board to develop a workable policy and implement a review process for the limited deployment of tasers. The tasers would be issued to a select group of crisis intervention team officers who would first, again, be trained by Lieutenant Searls. The tasers would be purchased, if approved, through the JAG grant, and although we won't have enough for 10 purchases at roughly $1,700 apiece, we would ultimately work in the future toward having 10 CITs issued tasers. Since the civilian police review board agreed to work with me, I've asked Dr. Mike Slasher to present them the same information that was provided to you previously. And between Lieutenant Searls, myself, and Dr. Slasher, we'll be able to ensure that we get all of the information to the CPRB for review so that we can have the best approach to fit our community's needs. As I previously stated, we've collected taser policies from a variety of different police agencies. I plan to review those policies, each of those policies, with the civilian police review board, develop a draft policy, bring that draft policy back to you so that all of us feel comfortable with it. We'll then review a, or develop a review process, or I'll present a review process very similar to that of the CPRB with respect to the complaint process that we currently deal with. If this request moves forward, I will certainly assure you, for the transparency issue, that we will repeatedly share information with the city, or the city council, and either through the CPRB or myself. So I'd like to develop a draft policy, bring it back to you, get your input, make this a work in progress, but get the process moving along because we need to get moving forward with this program. So with that, Mr. Roberts, I don't know how you want to...
Well, what I'll do is I'll take the first, first I'll take, well, I guess I could ask her if there are questions to Chief Conley, and then we're, then we'll have public input, and then we'll have discussion. All right, well, it's just Diane.
Thanks, chief. What, when, when, just to clarify, when you say you will develop a policy with CPRB, is this policy covering training, a policy covering the guidelines for their use, or and a policy for the public review process, all of those things?
Correct.
So it'll be a comprehensive policy?
Correct.
Covering the spectrum of taser?
And it gets very complicated?
Training, use, and guidelines?
That's correct. It gets very complicated, but most of the police agencies that we have obtained policy, their policies integrate all of those different combinations in theirs as well.
Okay, just so I knew what this policy was going to cover. So that's what the end product will be?
Right. Although I must say that no other police agency has a civilian police review process.
Okay.
We're unique. Okay, we're going to just go down the line. Bill Brown?
Yeah, I did think of one question after reviewing some of the information you gave us. I think one of the conflicting things in my mind is, I still think there's a not insignificant chance of injury from a taser. And even in training with the mats and everything to prevent injury as much as possible, I don't feel completely comfortable requiring someone to be tased. But I do think that if someone's going to carry a taser, they should experience it and see and know what they're inflicting on someone. So the only way I see to get around that conflict is to make that an optional thing for, so with the CIT, my question is, would the CIT officers be required to carry a taser, or would it be optional?
Well, I'll let Rich, I'll let Rich address the training portion because I personally agree with you. Now, we don't obviously have to be shot in order to understand what the impact of a firearm can do, but certainly pepper spray, how you can work through that, the taser, and during Rich's training, they discuss that very issue. My policy would be that if you carry it, you need to know what the impact of the tool is. But what are your thoughts?
Taser International says that the deployment of a taser on an officer who carries it is by definition optional. When I started drafting my recommendations to the chief, and they are nothing more than recommendations to him, I thought it important, like you said, that the officers experience it so they understand exactly what is going on. So it is optional, they can refuse to carry a taser, but in my eye, if they carry one, they need to understand it.
And I concur with that.
Going down the line, Charlie?
Yeah, I just want to touch back on, I think Diane pretty well covered it, but there were some general parameters of guidelines in your original memo. We never really talked about them, but we've all read them, I hope the public has as well.
Right.
That's sort of like the starting framework for a lot, plus the refinements that you've done since then. Is that correct?
Well, and, and quite frankly, my vision of this is, I would like to present the civilian police review board with nine different policies, or eight different policies specifically addressing taser, to see the difference throughout the state of Illinois. And from there, we get the best practices from there, but I can assure you, at the conclusion of these nine, it will be the most restrictive policy, bar none. So for that reason, I don't want to prematurely start introducing that to the CPRB folks until they get an opportunity to look at it, give me their input, and they're going to realize, I think overall, that I'm going to present something much more, and it'll be a collaboration of working with it. But you're right, Rich provided some guidelines after he came back from St. Louis. He made some recommendations to me, knowing my philosophy about, about how important this is to our community. So as a result of that, it will be more restrictive, and we can share those with you if you have questions, but I would like instead to get the input of the CPRB and then present you with one.
And we will, of course, give the minutes, and they're, CPRB stuff will be public too and all that, so we can follow along.
Correct.
Thank you. The mayor?
Yeah, you said that you're looking at other jurisdictions in Illinois.
Correct.
Are you going to look at, I would think, other places in the country that are known for having a really good police department?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I have some, some best practices through the International Association of Chiefs of Police. We're going to use resources from throughout the world, to be honest with you, but we're going to refine it. With respect to our local policies, I'm going to refine it only because we work daily with those folks, and they're, you will see in the end, or the CPRB folks will see at the end, that ours is much more restrictive than theirs. But yes, I will get input from all over.
Thank you.
Others? I'll just ask one question, and we'll go to public input. Friday's News Gazette had an article about a person who ultimately got tased here in the community. It was in this article, did you see that?
I, I can see it, but I didn't read it.
Okay. And it sounded, it sounded like this was an Urbana, Urbana local incident, and the sheriff's, I think it was the sheriff's department was ultimately called in, and the man was tased to protect himself from cutting his own neck. So I'm just wondering if you had any comments about that experience?
Well, actually, Rich is the Metro SWAT commander, co-commander, and he was actually on that call.
Okay.
That was another one.
Oh, different, disregard.
I was at one and that one. With respect to that particular incident, that was a stalking event, and one of our officers attempted to stop him, and there was a physical confrontation. The man ended up barricading himself in his apartment in Town and Country. And ultimately, we applied for a search warrant, we executed the search warrant, and we were doing a slow, methodical search. We encountered him in the kitchen, and he was holding a knife to his throat, and he, he was essentially threatening to, to cut him, his, his neck. And there was a deputy that was with the Urbana officers, and when, when he said that he was going to do that, apparently, he, he took the knife away from his neck for just a split second, and the deputy ended up applying the taser to him. And they went in and, and affected an arrest.
So it's going to be an interesting conversation as we learn about the techniques and the needs for the, in the community, what, what works and what doesn't. And I think these recent instances are going to be useful to know about. All right, let's go to public input. Thank you, gentlemen. Daryl Cruz, would you like to come forward?
Hello, I live at 2007 South George Huff Drive in Urbana, and it's been eight weeks since this topic has been before the city council. I think the community is very interested to hear what your thoughts are regarding the issue of tasers. I, I know I am. I only hope that in your discussion tonight that you withhold making a final decision because this would have been the first time for the community to be able to hear what you have had to say on the issue, and to give them an opportunity to be able to respond to what your thoughts are. I think that would be very critical. Also, there are a couple of other issues and examples I would like to quickly share with you. I have a copy of Officer Wertz's report regarding the incident on Main Street in the video that was shared with you, and his account of what occurred during the tasering incident. And I would like to read portions of that to you and have you think of it in terms of a community perspective, a citizen's perspective, rather than a police officer's perspective. Okay? Make that switch, please, once, and listen to this. As I approached, I heard the sound of a shotgun go off four times. I viewed the subject simply turn around and walk away after each shot. The subject was being shot with Urbana's PD less lethal shotgun loads. Then I approached the subject with my Taser X-26, activate, and activated it. I instructed the subject to get down on the ground multiple times. The subject just looked at me and did not follow my instructions. The subject soon turned away from me, and I shot the subject in the back with my taser. Okay, so he wasn't, the officer wasn't being threatened with lethal, lethal force, but we're aware of all the incident that occurred before that. But the taser shooting certainly was in the back when he was walking away from the officer. The subject immediately fell to the pavement. Urbana police officers and I went over to the subject and attempted to gain control of him, to place him in restraints. The subject would not comply with giving his arms. I would ask you, he was just shot with a taser, he collapsed on the pavement, one would assume that his muscle, neurological muscle control was impaired, and the officers are asking him to comply with giving him his arms, to gain control of him and to place him in restraints. The subject would not comply with giving his arms and was fighting our attempts to gain control. I'm not sure what fighting means. I'm just reading this and trying to understand what's occurring. Is his arms trapped under his body? Is he having spasms that he's reacting to what occurred? Or is he actually fighting back with several officers on top? Since the subject was continuing to struggle with our attempts to control him, I took the cartridge off the Taser X-26 and performed a drive stun on his middle to lower back one time. I don't know that the public was aware that the gentleman was tased twice, a second time when the officers were on top of him. The knife was not in his hands, he's laying on the pavement, having been tased, and he's tased a second time. Okay, that's the report that's going on here. There's no weapon, the officers have control of him, and he's not complying because he's been tased once, and they tased him again.
You have one minute.
Soon after the drive stun, we were able to get his arms behind his back and place handcuffs on him. Now, I just share that officer's report, that part of it, to raise the issue of a use-of-force policy. What can the public expect in terms of how tasers will be used, under what circumstances, and the dynamic that exists in terms of compliance because of lethal force? Or could other things have been done in place of that? Use of a stun gun a second time when there was no knife and officers were on top of him, which is what they asked him to do to begin with? I would suggest to you that there's a great need to have a broader community discussion. There needs to be, I have just 60 seconds to finish, or not? Okay. I would suggest to you that the use-of-force policy, if the city would happen to, and I'm opposed to tasers at this time, that the community, and I'm, I guess I'm a little concerned that the civilian police review board is not the agency to work with the police department to develop a use-of-force policy. Why don't you allow some community members that are interested in a subject to be part of that, if you're really interested in broad support? And finally, when it comes to the use of tasers and new technologies in a community, the community can decide how the police wants to be pleased to protect itself and fight crime, because we're all for that. But we also need to recognize there's different racial groups that exist in our community, and that we know that there are racial disparities that exist in the criminal justice system. And for Urbana to adopt tasers, there has to be a feeling of confidence and trust right from the beginning from all segments of the community. Or the use of the taser in incident in a improper place, in a wrong section of town that didn't understand and support the adoption of it will create unfortunate side effects, consequences for the city and police department. So this is not something you should rush into, and if you read the report and you look at these, there's always more to it than what is first portrayed to the public. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll have a conversation now. All right. So anybody want to initiate a, the topic, or put some thoughts into the public domain at this point? Yeah, Carol?
I'll just add one, very small one, actually, but it is a big one. I think the RPC's presentation really gave the description of what real public participation looks like. If there's a topic that government bodies really don't want large public participation, they keep it inside of the government bodies for walls. But if there's one that they do want public participation, putting in a new light or something, they take it out to the public. I think the best thing that can be done in this case is that there's serious arrangements made, and I think we talked about this on May 12th, to have real public input on the discussion, and to address the, the ethnic and cultural disparities. We can't make a decision and completely ignore the concerns of the community disproportionately represented in the criminal justice system and all the other disparities in the community and act as if they don't exist. And so without real thorough discussion, it makes it very difficult to see that there's legitimate public participation being sought in this matter. And so that actually is, hopefully, something that people will put on the table for real discussion outside of these four walls, and host real public meetings on this from the city, not just from one part of the police department, or me as the only African-American person here responsible for speaking for all black folks, but for the city council to really deal with this issue, and there is a... But for the city council to really deal with this issue, and there is a disparity and you have to respond to it. And so I am really, really encouraging us to take this show on the road, as we've said the last eight weeks. But as RPC so beautifully demonstrated, maybe it is exactly what the community wants. But we can't sit here and say, well, they didn't come tell us, so it's what I want and that's what I'm gonna do.
Comments on anything yet? Eric?
So I'm gonna preface my remarks by saying that I, I took this issue really seriously. I, I don't know why I took it so much more seriously than most issues on, well, I mean, I take all the issues seriously, but I spent a lot of time on this. And basically, I spent my time going through peer-reviewed literature. I guess I felt a special responsibility to do that because I have access to the, all of the peer-reviewed literature through the journals that the university subscribes to. So I said, okay, I can use those subscriptions because this is part of the public service component of, of being a professor. And I, I do have preliminary thoughts on this. They're not cast in stone. Oh, I also should say that I did not look, I, I didn't, paid no attention to sources, to recommendation of information sources by TASER. I ignored things that came directly from TASER. If any of the things I read were also suggested by TASER, that's purely coincidental. That's not how I got to the references. I also discounted one reference that came from somebody who had consulted, who was a consultant, a medical consultant for people who were suing TASER. Because this, this, these people also had an agenda. I tried as much as possible to look at peer-reviewed studies that were financed by apparently, you know, by the Department of Justice, the National Institutes of Health, by agencies that should be neutral. So I'll just tell you what I'm coming out with, and I'd be glad to have deeper conversations, share my bibliography, share the papers with anybody. But broadly, I'm willing to approve use of tasers. But the conditions and, and some of the conditions that I have were things that have already come from police department. A couple of them, I think, are new. I would say one condition would be there should be no use on people who are already handcuffed or otherwise restrained. The only permissible use is to enable the restraint of an individual whose unrestrained actions would threaten grave injury either to the individual or others. This is the unique aspect of the TASER is that it does incapacitate. It does incapacitate people temporarily. It doesn't in itself injure people, although people may be injured if they, if they fall. But I would, in thinking about, with reference to what we were, to what was just said, I would prohibit the use in the drive stun mode. The drive stun mode only, doesn't incapacitate, it only causes pain. I don't know how to say that something that only causes pain but doesn't induce compliance effectively. I don't know how to distinguish that from torture. So I don't think, I, I think it should not be used in, in drive stun mode. I, I talked with the chief at the, you know, the director of the Police Training Institute. I asked him that specific question. And he said, no. He said, often, that actually increases the level of resistance. And it, it isn't generally useful for compliance. The Citizen Police Review Board, and this is already stated, should review all incidents in which tasers are deployed. That's already, I think, a given. I think everybody agrees with that. That's very important. It was cited to a, the, the study from the, from Canada that followed the tasing of the, of a person in the Vancouver Airport. That whole study, the major recommendation that came from it was civilian review of police actions. And that has really improved things. And I think we're actually in pretty good shape here. I think all TASER videos should be posted for public viewing as soon as feasible. I think everybody understands that you could delay it if the video is to be used as evidence in either a disciplinary or criminal hearing. But all the videos should be made available to the public as soon as they wouldn't interfere with those procedures. And finally, the council should review TASER use one year after tasers, tasers are issued. And each year after that, as the council seems desirable. So those would be my conditions. Some of them are already, you know, in the list that have already been suggested. I think the prohibition on drive stun mode is not, is not there. But I think that that really should be there. And, and I think there should be a really, really clear statement on public viewing. I, I, as I said, I think that transparency in this case is very critical.
I'd like to ask council how it would like to handle the perceived need that we have in the community for public forum.
Charlie?
I was tempted to ask the chief if he had some ideas of how to interact with the, how to take the civilian police review board process that he has in mind on the road to, to achieve that.
Well, I, I also gave that some thought. First of all, the civilian police review board, and I, I hear you, Ms. Ammons. Oftentimes, people don't come to the, to the government building in order to do that. That's why I went to the ACLU. That's why I spoke with the NAACP. That's why I went to different churches in the community and shared this issue. I don't know at what point we continue to share this information. I, I would be more than willing to post it on our website so that the, anybody who has any questions can send any information in to me. And as we continue to build this, if they have issues or concerns, anybody, they can review the video and, and share it. I, I just don't know if we can continue to go throughout the community and still accomplish.
Well, I was, I was, what I was thinking was that you could start a presentation of material to the civilian police review board. Get that out there to the public. And then go with the civilian police, the civilian police review board could move from, instead of meeting here, could meet at, in three or four or five different neighborhoods around the community.
If, if the civilian police review weren't willing to do that, I'm certainly willing.
Yeah, maybe the neighborhood associations could help host that or something. You know, who know, who knows, who know, you can.
Now, we've got quite a few.
Yeah, I don't know if that's, yeah.
All right, so let's continue to discuss. And Mayor?
I would think that you draw up the proposed policy and then take it on the road. We have people come here and say, don't act on this tonight. You know, like, we're not planning to act on this tonight. We're gonna study this thing and have a proposal. And then we can get public input and take it on the road.
Others?
Just a.
Diane Marlin?
Oh, sorry. Just a technical question. Is CPRB subject to Open Meetings Act? So it needs to be videotaped or it needs to be recorded and then played later? So that could be done if they held meetings in different neighborhood locations?
I, I, may I make a, I guess I'm gonna suggest something also. I wanna, I wanna back, backwind our memory to when we adopted the original restrictions on smoking in public areas in the community. And this was before the state law was passed. Those people who are interested in that topic sponsored a public forum at Carl's Pavilion Forum. Forum, which is a commodious room with a lot of seating. There's, there's microphones and equipment there. And with the topic that would be related to public health and well-being, I would think that it would be possible for either the city council to sponsor such a meeting. I would, I would think that it would be considered to be in basically a non-city environment that would be open to the community access and might be a place where a true, a forum could feel like a forum and not necessarily report by a city committee. And I want you, but I would say that there would be somebody here on city council or in the, the mayor's office or its staff who would want to become the champion of such an event.
Diane Marlin?
Well, I just gonna let, share my thoughts on where I am right now. Number, first of all, in general, I will, would favor going ahead with the purchase of tasers on the condition that we have a policy that is acceptable. I really think if we're going to do this, we should authorize the Citizens Police Review Board to start working on this. I think the process outlined by the chief seems reasonable, especially looking at other policies. And within the framework of the recommendations we've already received. The policy would focus on officer training, on guidelines for use, on the review process. And whatever happens in the community, I think CPRB should hear that feedback too. So if, we should try to be most efficient with people's time and energy. Both the board members, the police officers involved and, and council members and the public. So if we're going to do some of this in the community, I think it should be in the context of a CPR, CPRB board meeting or commission meeting. And then I think we can develop a reasonable policy for use. The thing, one other thing that I find very compelling is I've read all the hundreds of pages of documents we've been given. I've done a lot of research on my own. I've looked at the NAACP position statements, the ACLU publications. And actually, many of the recommendations of both those organizations are reflected in these policy recommendations that Lieutenant Searls put together. But what I keep coming back to is the fact that tasers are being used in Urbana, on people in Urbana, by representatives of, of the University of Illinois and Champaign County Sheriff's Department. And we do not have any control over their guidelines or their use or their review process. And so I would much rather, it's kind of one of those, one of those choices. I'd much rather have the guidelines in place and have our own officers equipped with these tools rather than depending on these other jurisdictions over which we have no oversight whatsoever and no review. And that's a, that's a compelling argument for me. So that's where I am at this point. But I really think I'm ready to let the CPRB get to work with the police chief and their officers. We can provide input along the way. The public can provide input on the way. And we can figure out how to get out into the community and have some of these meetings in the community. I think we should use maybe the community centers in some of the grade schools that have been built. It might be a more welcoming environment than even asking people to come to the Carl Forum, which is kind of, you know, it's kind of a large, kind of a large formal space. It's a very nice space, but, but I think the, using the schools or a park district facility would be a better way to have a meeting. And we could tape the meetings and comply with the Open Meeting Act. But some of them are gonna have to be here just for the convenience of the people serving on the board.
Charlie Smythe, and then Bill?
I'd like to turn Diane's comments into a motion directing the chief and related staff to work with the CPRB and, and a public participation methodology to bring back to the council recommendations on the training, use and.
Public review process.
And public review process related to deployment of tasers for the city of Urbana.
Second?
Discussion on the motion. Bill, do you wanna talk?
Sure. I'll just go over my thoughts on this. I think I'm pretty much in agreement with Eric and Diane as far as what kind of review and oversight needs to be done. I, I think my opinions on this have evolved a little bit since I first started reading about it in depth a couple of months ago. I was under the impression that they really could cause some kind of heart problem. And then after reading some of the studies, it seems like there's no real evidence that electrically, you know, they can cause a heart attack. But there are other ways that just from the, the trauma of the event can, can cause thrombosis or something. And then, and then the falling and everything like that. So, you know, they're, they're dangerous, but I can see where they could be useful in certain situations. So as far as the training goes, as long as officers are well-trained and they understand that de-escalation is still Plan A and, and they can't become dependent on them because we also see that a lot of times they don't work. People, they miss or the, the probes don't go in. So as long as the officers aren't dependent on them and they have, you know, a Plan D and E and have those other things they do first, I think I'm okay with going ahead and developing some kind of use policy. And I think that a lot of the community groups have been helpful in, in providing examples of those policies too. So I, I hope as, as far as what, what you collect for examples of your policy, you'd also take into consideration that policies have been forwarded to some of us and I, I think probably to you too by some of the community groups like ACLU and NAACP. And those groups could also, are also welcome to have their own forums. I'm sure the chief would, would show up and, and, you know, be responsive to questions. And that's another way we often have public conversations is that those, those groups will sponsor forums. I haven't heard of anybody doing that yet, but that's another option. But I think, yeah, I think that probably covers. And, and I had the same kind of feeling as Diane. As far, as long as tasers are being used in our community by others and they can be used in stun mode by the, the county sheriff under their policy and for compliance, simple compliance issues under the university policy. I think we could do probably a better job or, or at least a, a job that we're more comfortable with in developing our own policy that would, would satisfy our, our feelings on it. So, so yeah, I would, I think I would support Charlie's motion.
Other comments then? I guess we could, was there, Michael, I'm sorry, I missed you.
No, that's fine, all right. Yeah, I couldn't have put it better than Diane did. So I'm not gonna belabor this, but I, I would just also say that I just wanna commend Chief Connolly and his staff. I think they've been very forthright with producing all the information that's been requested in a very timely manner. And they're going about this the right way. These are devices that he feels strongly are needed for the police department. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to do everything we can to vet the issue. And it sounds to me like a lot of folks here are gonna be supportive of a purchase if the policy and review procedures can be put together. And he has said from day one that that's what he wanted and that he wanted them to be the best anywhere. And so who's to say that Urbana couldn't end up being the, the model that others follow for the safest possible use of, of less lethal tools for our law enforcement officers as opposed to a gun? And I will refuse or disagree with anyone who says that this is not about not using a gun. This is, that is certainly a factor here. So I think it's very important that we continue to proceed down this road. And, and, and the only difference that I would make would be, I don't necessarily think the drive stun mode issue should just be taken completely off the table. There could be scenarios where that's the officer's defense if he's been disarmed. Or there's some other factors there that, that allow that to be his mode of defense. So, I mean, I think there probably are very legitimate reasons not to just take that off the table. But this discussion certainly ought to be had.
Okay, very, very good. So we do have a motion for, that directs. So we do have a motion for that direct staff, and it's been seconded. Let's just vote on that at this time. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed. All right, well, that's a good direction for staff, and at this point, I think we probably have finished our discussion, and unless there's further comment, we are adjourned.